Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting that was scheduled for last week when we got snowed out. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Treasurers Report for November and December 2021 are available in the Business Office. I'd first like to open it up for public comment on any of the agenda items. Reminding people that while the Board provides great leeway regarding the three-minute time limit for public comment, in the event that the Speaker is sharing hateful, hurtful, judgmental, inaccurate, or otherwise inappropriate comments, no such extension of time will be allowed. The Board wants to hear from the community. We want to hear specifically about your child and your child's experiences in our school. So, is there anybody that would like to speak on any of the agenda items? Okay, then we're going to move to the consent agenda.
I have also approved the consent agenda items two through eight as presented at the Board of this meeting.
Second, questions or comments? Mrs. Polino?
The consent agenda for this evening contains the minutes approval for the last meeting on January 11th, CSE/CPSE placements, additional staff hours, an agreement with Mercy College for auditory services for students, approving and amending unpaid work time for staff members, an amendment of an appointment of a long-term sub whose employment is being extended, and approval of a health and welfare services contract with the Yorktown School District.
So were there any questions from the Board about any of those items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. We're going to move into presentations tonight. Dr. Luff, do you want to do the introductions?
I would love to. So our first presentation this evening will be our athletics budget presentation presented by Mr. Dave Cantrell. Come on up.
Thank you. So before we get into the budget and the costs and savings that we're anticipating over the next few years, the slide that you see now is just a brief overview of what our department is and who it consists of. There's one administrator, which is myself, one administrative assistant. We have eight instructional staff, which includes six full-time PE teachers, two in each building, one PE and health teacher who's split between the middle school and high school, and one full-time health education teacher located in the high school. We have four school nurses, which includes one that was added during this school year. We have one nurse in each building, elementary, middle, and high, in addition to the floating nurse role that we now have. For our coaches, that's our athletic staff, we've added four in the 2021-2022 school year. This fall, we had 21 coaches, which included the additional two football coaches and the one field hockey coach. This winter, we had 22 coaches, which is up one from the past where we've added one girls' basketball coach. This spring, we're anticipating having 20 coaches, which is no change from the previous school year.
David, before you go on, the floating nurse, it's because of COVID? Because of more students being ill? Like what?
So, the majority of it has come from our inability to staff substitute nurses when there's a problem. Now we have, with having our floating nurse, one, we can support a building that may need additional support for COVID. But specifically, if a nurse is absent, we know that we have another nurse to fill that position.
Yeah, I think we realized, I mean, our nurses, once COVID hit, were inundated with new tasks and responsibilities they never had before. We're asking them to do testing and everything else. So this opportunity presented a way for us both to alleviate substitute nurse problems. Nurses would refrain from taking any time off because they knew it could leave a building uncovered, and then we had nurses split between buildings trying to cover. So the floating nurse was something we had years ago and really provides some way to alleviate the strain of an individual being sick and also provides us additional coverage as needed for those nurses that have really just been overwhelmed for many years and couldn't be more proud of the work that they've done for our students in our school district because they've really stepped up and done anything we asked of them to help keep our students and staff safe. So I do want to throw that in there.
And I think it's really good to be proactive instead of reactive, so that's good. Okay, thank you.
One second. Okay. The slide that you see now is referencing our fall athletic offerings. In the fall, we offer cheerleading, cross-country, field hockey, football, boys soccer, girls soccer, girls swimming, and volleyball. You'll see at the bottom, the bold text indicates a new program, which for us this year, we brought back JV field hockey and JV football, which along with the, you know, athlete participation, increased our coaching staff because we needed coaches to supervise those athletes. The M in parentheses indicates a merged sport. For girls swimming, we are merged with Maia PAC. We host that, so we provide half of the coaching stipend as well as the transportation for our girls to and from meets. In the winter, we host boys basketball, girls cheerleading, gymnastics, ice hockey, boys swimming, wrestling, and indoor track. This year, girls basketball, we were able to field a JV team for the first time in a long time. So again, that came with an additional coaching stipend. And gymnastics, ice hockey, and boys swimming is merged with Lakeland. For those sports, we do not host. So while we do contribute to the coaching stipends with our joint programs, it gives us relief in the transportation aspect. In the spring, we host baseball, golf, boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, softball, and track and field. None of those sports, as of today, are merged. We are anticipating having a merger with softball with Haldene, City and School District. We will be hosting that. We will be taking on some of their girls because they do not have varsity program to offer to their athletes. So as we look ahead into the budget, what we can anticipate for the next few years, we're going to cover topics like transportation, stipends for our coaches, our trainer, and our support staff, the various dues and fees that the athletic department pays to the state section conference and BOSI's, materials and supplies such as jerseys and athletic equipment, and the live streaming services that we offer. The goals of our budget are really founded in safety and sustainability. We want to ensure that our students have adequate and safe athletic equipment for their practices and their games. We want to make sure that we have a sustainable cycle of replacing old or outdated, broken equipment. And we want to make sure that we're always creating and maintaining a variety of athletic programs at various levels, middle school through high school for all of our students. And of course, we want to try to eliminate any unnecessary costs or redundancies to the district and the community. So looking ahead, short term and long term, these are anticipated costs that we're expected to shoulder going forward. The first is a constant, those are our coaching stipends. Those stipends increase as per our Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers contract. Those are set rates that will go up every year as we maintain and retain our coaches from season to season. Another area that's causing those stipend costs to increase is the increase in JV programs that we've offered, which require more coaches. Like I said before, we have two additional coaches in football and one apiece in field hockey and girls basketball. Another anticipated cost that we're anticipating is equipment and supplies. There's been almost a universal increase in the cost of equipment across all platforms, not just in athletics. And the recent supply chain, you know, dilemmas have really exacerbated that. Another reason why these costs are going to go up is because we need to replace non-functional scoreboards and various other protective equipment that we have, such as our mats down at the track for our jumping and our vaulting activities. So these are things that in the short term will need to be replaced. Our fees, dues, and officials, again, with our increased number of teams and programs that we offer, we're going to see an increased number of dues associated with those teams. And our local live platform costs through BOSI's increase with our usage, our hours, and our total streaming capacity. For long-term, down-the-road improvements that the discussions have just begun to take place, some of the items that we're touching upon are lighting outdoors, specifically LED lighting versus our fluorescent bulbs that we have now, turf maintenance, and the fencing surrounding all of the athletic perimeters and facilities. Going into those long-term improvements, again, these are down-the-road but things that we need to start thinking about now so that we are not surprised when it comes time to fix them. On the left, you'll see an image of our stadium lights as they finished the fall season. As you can see, some of them are obviously burning out. And on the right, you'll see the outfield of our baseball field, which in the fall serves as one of our practice fields as of right now for our football team because our turf is very congested due to the high number of field-needing teams that we have. So just speaking on the lights to begin with, what I'm proposing we do in the future is move away from this light bulb method that we have now and switch over to LEDs. The main reason for that is, simply put, the bulb life. It's a cost to replace them the first time, but those bulbs will outlive most of us. They have 20 times the life of a regular bulb, and they come with a variety of warranties that ensure that if they should go out before their life or their half-life is met, they're replaced at no cost to us. The LED bulbs allow us to do something that's called selective lighting, whereas now, when we turn our lights on outside, they spew light into every direction. It's called spill. LED lights allow us to target the light, like the lights you see in the image. The field of play is beautifully lit in the air and on the ground, but you'll see the lighting hardly travels onto the track, doesn't make it to the stands, and doesn't make it to any of the surrounding buildings, which leads it to be a more neighborhood-friendly option, especially as we continue to expand and our needs get greater. We don't want to disrupt any of our neighbors in the community. We don't want light spilling into their backyard, and we don't want causing any disruptions for any of our roadways. The other positive aspect of this is that it has automated interactive systems, meaning that right now, we have two options with our lights. Our lights can go on, our lights can go off. With systems like this, we can have lights flash for celebrations, we can turn half the lights off, we can target them to one area of the field all automatically without having to go up there and move anything. So for events like graduation or any ceremonies that we want to have it light, we can spotlight those events and really just give a more intimate experience to whatever it is we're hosting on our outside fields. And the other benefit to this is that it would be fitted to our current structure. So those light poles, those light fixtures are the most expensive component of our lighting system. And with today's technology, the two companies that we've spoken to would both be able to come in and fit these LED fixtures directly to what we have standing, reducing the need to replace or recreate the wheel, if you would, for the lighting systems that we already have. This is just another example of how the LED lighting can be targeted. This is a baseball field complex. Obviously, our backyard doesn't look quite like this, but as you can see, they have each field perfectly lit within the foul lines, and even the fields are split in dark areas, reducing that spill, reducing the disruption that it could have on other areas. The second item that I'd like to talk about are the potential benefits of turfing the backfield here at the middle school, high school campus. And the primary driving force behind that is that, long-term, it's a safer playing surface. When you're playing on grass fields, especially as they are now here at Putnam Valley, our grass field retains a lot of water, becomes very muddy, becomes very unstable. That compounded with the fact that we do have, you know, wildlife around us, that this fall, we had to deal with burrowing animals in the backfield, creating, you know, divots and holes for student athletes to roll their ankle or other various, you know, falling injuries. The turf eliminates those things. It comes with a retaining wall, it comes with, you know, a measured, flat surface, and the surface is unchanging. It's set. It will never have, you know, an animal dig into it. It's not going to randomly cave in because it's built over concrete. It reduces our maintenance needs for our fields and grounds that we have right now. Turfs come with, you know, set maintenance plans of things that you need to do over certain periods of time and over a number of certain years. It'll also help to extend the life of the turf that we already have. Right now, all of our teams, when we have games, play off of that field, which, you know, crushes the half-life of the turf because we need to replace and repair much more frequently because it's never getting a break. With two equal turf fields that we're able to host all of our sports, one, we can host sports on the same day, which creates more of a community experience for us. But two, on days where we have opposite schedules, we can play on the turf on this Friday, leave it alone on Saturday, come back to it on Monday, extending the life of both turfs and avoiding overuse issues. As far as a day-to-day benefit would go, it would alleviate a lot of the field congestion we have now. It would remove that need of creating a mock football field on our grass outfield of our baseball field. And it would also help alleviate some of the issues regarding our modified practices, which currently go to either the town park or the elementary school. Having a turf space that we know would be consistent would allow us to keep some of those teams on campus and reduce the need for transporting them, you know, to and from these off-site locations when they could just go behind their school. And last, it would allow for multi-game celebrations for homecoming. You know, homecoming is always a big thing that we try to do here. We're trying in the future to schedule those events all within one weekend so we can make a homecoming event and a rally rather than having one homecoming game here, senior night there. This would allow us to have multiple games at multiple times and create more of that big event focus. The image that you're looking at now is an old image before the Wellness Center was created. This shows an architect rendering of what a turf in the backfield would look like. And the major thing that I want to draw your attention to, in the bottom-left corner of the field structure here, you'll see that we've managed to turf the softball field, which would give them an outstanding benefit because one of the biggest issues they face now, excuse me, again, when it rains or we have any type of weather, this third base line on the wood side of the field constantly floods. We end up needing to import, you know, clay and feeder materials to bolster up that third base line. And as the season goes on, as the spring goes on, that problem just gets worse and worse. As we try to remove that water, the third base line gets deeper and deeper. So every time it rains, it stores more and more water. It wouldn't affect the home run field at all. We'd still have the ability to put in a temporary home run fence when softball was in session. It would actually allow us to make that fence a little bit stronger because those fittings in the turf, you know, again, would be fitted in cement, and we'd have a nice cover for them, making them less of an issue as they are in the grass with people running by. And it would allow us a full football, lacrosse, field hockey, and soccer field, just as our turf is now. It's really, you know, long-term, looking at it, it is a good supplementary option to have. We are obviously years away from being there, but it is something I want to make people aware of for the safety of our student athletes and the sustainability of the resources that we keep creating and developing to help feed the community. It gives us another space for us to use, for community partners to use, and really just provides more of that community-building area that we're trying to develop. We spoke a lot about, you know, spending money and things that cost us money, but luckily, we do have some anticipated savings coming through. First, one of our most, you know, expensive costs that we have is transportation of our student athletes. We anticipate having slightly reduced transportation because we've started initiating, similar to other districts in the area, self-transportation requirements for our merged, non-hosted teams. That would include our gymnastics, our ice hockey, our boys swimming team at the current moment. That seems to be the status quo amongst districts in the area, that students who participate on a team not hosted at their school are responsible for transporting themselves to their practices. Once they're at their practices, once they're at the other school, that host school provides transportation to wherever they need to go. We've also managed to reduce our return transportation for our fall and spring modified teams that are currently off-site. In the past, we would transport teams to that site for their game and then back to the school to get picked up. Both of those locations are only about a mile to two miles away from where we are right now. And now, instead of bringing them back to the school while their parents are there watching them, they can get picked up directly from that location, which relieves us of keeping a bus there the entire time. For our savings that we're looking at in materials and supplies, we have an equipment manager position right now, which has greatly helped in reducing our redundancies of equipment and managing our inventory to make sure that we're appropriately supplied with lacrosse balls, basketballs, whatever it may be, and that anything that is now getting out of compliance, such as helmets and things that expire with their safety ratings, we make sure that we're on top of that, and we have those items replaced and restored before that date comes. As we've been going on and replacing this equipment, we've been sure that we're securing our large-cost equipment that comes with applicable warranties and long-term maintenance schedules. Things like the table in the gym, the score table in the gym. The new table that we plan on getting comes with a six-year warranty and preventative maintenance, where they'll come in, they'll look at the table, they'll replace any bulbs, any wires that may be faulty, just to help extend the life of that table. We've implemented a preventative maintenance system in the weight room to help extend the life of that equipment, to make sure that the pulleys, the cables, all those things remain safe for our student athletes. And again, just to extend that life because to keep replacing those things every two, three years, when they could be living for six, seven, eight years, you know, it just doesn't make sense, and we don't want to create that waste cycle. The other big change that we're making is I've started to implement a jersey cycle. What that will do will create set times, we're looking at four years right now, that varsity jerseys will be replaced. In the past, it has just been, okay, you know, this team, their jersey looks like it's falling apart, let's buy them a new jersey. This coach is complaining that their jersey doesn't fit their requirements anymore, let's get a new jersey. And it's just kind of been replaced as needed. By creating this cycle of jerseys, we know that at the four-year mark, those jerseys are still totally usable. So by moving them away from the varsity program down to the junior varsity program, we know that they have a quality jersey. Our varsity jerseys will always be, you know, the most current and effective, sustainable jerseys that are on the market at that time. And by the time that those jerseys make their way down to the modified program, we're not looking at threads and rags. We're looking at nice, you know, preserved jerseys that have a set shelf life here, and no one will ever have to have that raggedy, ripped jersey with the silk screening peeling off. Everyone will have, you know, adequate supplies for their teams. The other area in materials and supplies that we're working strongly towards to ensure that we always keep the savings going is we're only working with vendors that are state-contracted, which gives districts like ours about a 30% savings on team equipment regardless of what it is, whether it's a table for the gym, whether it's a helmet for a football player, whether it's a net for a volleyball team. Anything that falls into those state contracts saves us money long-term by working with those vendors specifically rather than trying to nitpick one item from one vendor and sending each individual thing out to bids. We know that we're getting bulk savings because they're on those state-approved contracts. And lastly, our savings coming from our chaperone staffing stipends. We've been assessing throughout the year our chaperone needs by sport and by season to make sure that our events are appropriately staffed but not overstaffed. We want to make sure that our students are safe, our grounds are secure, and our community, you know, is taken care of. But we don't want to, you know, overpopulate in areas that we don't need to have them in. We've created a universal no-practice day on Sunday, which applies to us in two different ways. One, according to Section 1 in the State of New York currently, you're not allowed to practice seven days in a row at any given time for any athletic season. So in the past, teams have said, okay, I'm going to take off Monday because I want to practice on Sunday or Thursday. This team's not going to practice but Friday, that one is. This way, we've set the schedule for all of the teams. Sunday also happens to be the most expensive day to have custodial staff on-site. So we're saving that cost of the district of having to staff the building by universally cutting that out for our teams. So our teams still have six practice days, and the most affordable practice days to the district and to the budget. And last, we're really making a big push to recruit new teachers, which, one, helps to build our program and build our sense of community, but, two, it allows us to have a temporary decrease in our stipend costs. New teachers who come in, come in on the first step of the coaching stipend as per the contract, just like they come in on the first step of the teaching contract. So while over time, that stipend will always increase, it's increasing from a lower base level rather than bringing in, you know, a veteran with, you know, 30 years of experience who's automatically at the top of our list. We're trying to establish and build the capacity of our new teachers and get them involved in the school community and get them more face time with our kids. Another way that we're not necessarily saving money, but we're attempting to offset our expenses is through our booster clubs, our fundraising efforts, and the revenue generated from events that we're hosting at the school. We've been hosting special events this year to offset team expenses. This is in partnership with our booster club. The events that we've had so far this year have been our Valley Wrestling Tournament, where we hosted five other teams plus our own, our Tiger Cheer Tournament, which is coming up next weekend on Saturday, the 5th, and our Alumni Basketball Game, which we're hoping to make an annual event, which was by far and away the most largely-attended event that we've had this year. It was a great community event. It was so nice to see all of our alumni and their parents coming back in to play some nice competitive basketball. All of those events help generate revenue that, through the booster club, can be dispersed to offset team expenses, whether it's for senior night, specialized equipment, you know, awareness months, whether it's breast cancer awareness, whatever it may be, those special jerseys and uniforms that our students wear. And that compounded with our concessions that we have at game events. Our Superstore, which has provided, you know, the community with that one-stop shop for any gear for any team that they may want, has been very successful. We just closed out our winter Superstore, so we're waiting on the numbers there. Our spring Superstore should be opening, you know, pretty shortly into March, once that spring season begins. And again, it's just providing us with a way to offset expenses, not just for the kids, for equipment that they may need that might be essential to it, but for any special events, senior recognition, parent nights, and things like that. And last, we have, you know, of course, our facility rental, all these facilities that we have. You know, we try to make them available to the community as much as we can once our own student athletes are taken care of and our, you know, our clinics occur. You know, we're still ironing out details with what various locations look like in terms of rental, but that will be an ongoing source of fundraising and revenue for us. And I want to end, you know, obviously, with a thank you for supporting us, for supporting me in the athletic department. And if you can see right up there, that's a freshly taken picture. We have one of the most beautiful sunsets over our athletic facilities outside. Thank you, everybody.
Dave, I just have a question for you. Specifically, since it's a budget presentation, that the dream casting for turf is not something that's going to be reflected in this current budget that we're going to be talking about, just for clarity's sake.
Say that one more time.
For clarity's sake, there is no budget money that's going into this budget for the dream casting for turf, correct?
Correct. Correct. Those were, you know, long-term projections of possibilities that we could look at down the road. There is nothing, you know, on paper, in stone, at all about that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Would you possibly consider company sponsorship for replacing turf in the future?
Sure. I mean, that would be a, you know, a more complicated question than just a simple yes. It would depend on, you know, what the reciprocities are there, what they want in terms of advertising, what they want in terms of marketing and labeling. But I wouldn't necessarily be against it, you know, within reason.
David, first, thank you. The jerseys, the turnover for the jerseys, that's for both girls and boys, same timeframe?
Yes, all teams.
Okay, I just want to confirm that.
All teams. Coming up this year, we will be replacing the boys' and girls' basketball jerseys to go into effect for their next season, next winter. Starting the 1st of July, in next school year's budget, we'll be replacing boys' and girls' lacrosse to go into effect into the following year. And we'll be getting each team onto their four-year cycle based on where they got their last jerseys leading up to this.
Thank you. When do you gauge interest for fall sports to determine adequate staffing for the fall?
So we send out a student interest survey, a Google form that the students fill out, which allow us to base our projections of how many students may or may not fall on these teams. We have minimum roster numbers that we must field to be able to compete. If those roster numbers coincide with the amount of interest we have, it allows us to project the varsity JV team. Now, sometimes that doesn't pan out. Sometimes we may have enough for our varsity team, like girls' soccer, for example. We didn't quite have the numbers that we needed to field a JV soccer team, so we didn't. And for this year, we had savings in that area because we didn't need to implement another coaching stipend. Next year, should we find ourselves in the position where we can field that team, that would be something that we'd be able to project. that would be something that we'd be able to project from our Google form, from our documents, and plan to include that stipend in our budget.
Thank you.
So maybe the best example of that was last spring, we were talking about whether or not, or over to summer, whether or not to carry a JV football team because there is a huge expenditure that comes along with that. And we were provided essentially a roster of students before we even opened our registration window, where a list of names of students who had verbally committed, and that was sort of enough for us to at least start planning on finding coaches and scheduling, and then once the registration window opened, then we confirmed those numbers were there to, to staff and run those teams.
One more question, this is for you, Jeremy, equipment manager position?
Yep, so there was something we've discussed at the board table a couple of times. Megan, our athletic trainer, took on that stipend position, and she's done a tremendous job. She took our storage room that was a bit of a chaos and made it clean and organized. And really, I think the savings is being able to share equipment, right? Every team doesn't need its own three water drunks, every team doesn't need the same pile of, of cones, right? So there's a lot of savings in terms of having a well-organized and distributed equipment that allows teams to share equipment by season, as opposed to everyone sort of, everyone maintain their own pile of equipment, and obviously, that's not the most financially or fiscal way to go about providing supplies for teams.
Thank you, so it wasn't a, it was a stipend position?
Just a stipend.
Okay.
I don't know, it's a stipend for an employee who's already here.
Okay, I just want to confirm that.
And that really did, you know, when Megan was going through it this summer, we found so much stuff that, you know, one team had, that the equivalent girls' team had the exact same thing of, that nobody uses at the same time, so it really, it, it, the savings was tremendous just in redundancies alone of purchasing. We didn't have to buy so many things that coaches had requested for their teams because we realized we already had it in storage on three different other shelves. So now we have our, you know, our community area, our sports-specific areas in there, and those shared items between programs, between seasons. It was a really big help.
Thank you.
And this is, I have one question, not really so much for you, David, maybe more for Natalie. I like the idea of sort of having a day free, you know, in terms of overtime, but I know Magma is always a Sunday program, so, and that's a short term, but will we try to move that to when athletics is on, like on a Saturday? Or are we going to keep the Sunday? I know it's a little...
That's something that we can definitely do. Right now, currently with our athletic program, we try to get all of our teams out of the building on Saturday by noon. They're mostly morning practices, they're usually shorter than they are during the weekday, which does leave the afternoon on Saturday open for additional programming, whether it be Magma, whether it be a, you know, a community group, whether it be anything.
So just to quickly answer, yes, we are looking to move Magma before I even knew that Sunday was a day off kind of a day, we were looking to move that during the week, during, in either an early evening or a late afternoon, because I think families were finding it more and more difficult to block off an entire morning on Sundays, and that was sort of a family day, so we are looking to move it.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Dave and commend him for his hard work. He's been with us for a very short period of time, and it's already had a tremendous impact on our athletic program and our school as a whole. I, I just think the numbers of students participating in sports is a testament to the job Dave's done of going out and talking to students in the hallway. The door to his office is always open, students feel welcome and supported, and I think that his persona has really helped increase the enrollment or the students participating in our athletic program, which I think ultimately benefits both the school and our students. So I do want to take the opportunity to thank Dave and his staff for doing a tremendous job in a very short period of time, so thank you.
Thank you.
It feels like you've been here forever already, David. I know.
In a good way.
In a good way.
All right, so now I'd like to welcome up Dr. Doherty and Ms. Melissa Ostraya, who will be giving our Special Education Budget Presentation.
Good evening. So before I start, I really just want to thank our faculty and staff and our principals. Throughout this entire pandemic, our priority has really been to meet the needs of our special education students to the best of our ability to make sure we had them in as much as we could, making sure that their health and safety was, was certainly put first. Very often, with students with disabilities, you don't always see their, their health risks, but they are present. We have diabetics in our school, we have students with multiple disabilities, and we all really came together from the very beginning and decided to, to really prioritize our students with disabilities and making sure they were in as much as possible and, and doing whatever we could to meet their needs. So I just want to thank them. I'm going to share the presentation with Ms. Melissa Ostraya, and she, she's the CSC Chairperson. For those of you that don't know what that is, that's a Committee on Special Education Chairperson. So she really runs committee meetings for determining whether students have disabilities, and then if so, what services they need, so please welcome her.
Thank you, so let's take a look at our current programming right now that we offer in Putnam Valley. So we do follow the continuum of special education services to support our students within the least restrictive environment. So what that means is taking a look at general education classrooms. For instance, students that do require supports within special education, they might receive combined supports of related services, integrated co-teaching classes, and/or special classes, which is smaller ratio of students to teacher. We also offer integrated co-teaching classes, grades K through high school, and that's where we provide, within the general education classroom, a general education teacher and a special education teacher to support our students. And finally, our special classes, that's our smaller classes, smaller ratios. Our students all receive the supports of special education services. We, they are highly designed for our students to meet their individualized needs and to provide the specially-designed instruction.
So one of the things that we have noticed over the years is our students that need a smaller class placement, that's a ratio of eight students, one teacher, and one assistant in there, have increased. So right now, what's going to drive, this is going to really, this slide will be, come up later in my presentation when I look at staffing. So our incoming kindergarten class that we're anticipating coming, we have an increase of about four to five students coming into our smaller class placement, and we are going to keep two students in that class. The most you can have in that class is eight students. So there, there's seven to eight students in that class. Then the, the grades two to four, right now, we're anticipating five students. We expect, we're hoping, to bring in other students from either other districts and possibly shift one or two other students in and out of that room. And then our middle school program, where the biggest shift is going, we have a, a pretty large class for this, for a small population. We have a total of eight students, which is an 8-1-1, so there are a maximum of eight students in that classroom. They're now moving up to the middle school. So really, what we're trying to do is build a program for our students. It's not just a class here, a class there, we really see several cohorts that are coming up through the school. So we're looking at, and again, you'll see it later in my presentation, adding one additional teacher who is highly trained in, in special, in the special class design. So the special class programs, you're really looking at teachers who can meet the needs of students through applied behavior analysis, through verbal behavior, through all different types of assessments. So we do a lot of data-taking, a lot of specialized teaching. We use the Teach Model, which is a highly structured, if, I'll, I'll show you just in these pictures. If you see some of the classrooms, you'll see bins, and, let me see if I see, here's a better picture. So you see the bins there, so they work highly, you know, the work is put into those bins, they then finish those bins, and they take a break, and then we try and decrease the amount of time that they take breaks. So a lot of data is taken, the goal is to have them working as independently as possible. So again, it, it's a very structured program, it takes a lot of training for our teachers, and just making sure that our teachers are really trained well in all of these methodologies in order to help our students grow and progress. They also do a lot of parent training, which is required, so we take what we know and what help parents really to understand how to work with their child at home, to complete tasks at home. And this is Ms. Boyle, who is working with a student, some of our students are non-verbal or have very limited language, and they use what's called a touch chat, so they speak with the assistance of a computer and with the pictures on the computer. And believe it or not, it really develops language. We had to have some non-verbal students who have really learned the structure of language by using these types of systems. And until you see it, you don't, you don't really understand how important and how much it develops language, because they, they learn, you know, a lot of our students are very visual learners, so they use this touch chat, which helps them first identify whether they, they have a need or a want, and then it just builds on that, and they are really proficient, some of our students, and use this so quickly and so efficiently, and it's fascinating to see. And I know, as for some of our parents, they have really appreciated the ability to, you know, if their child is sick or frustrated, they're able to use this and let them know what they want or need. So again, these classrooms are highly specialized, and we're not just creating a classroom, we're really creating a program and looking over many years of our students growing up K-12 here in our school.
So within our continuum of special education services, we also have students that require a higher level of support within a specialized school. So we also refer to that as an out-of-district placement. So to support our students with the least restrictive environment, we are continuously in conversations with our out-of-district partners and their families, the students' families. We go continuously to visit the students within their program, not only to see if they're ready to come back to district, but also to make sure that the out-of-district placement is meeting the students' needs. And, and like I said, there's, there's communication, not just at the annual review, that once-a-year meeting, but in constant communication with the parents and the families to make sure that the student is growing and progressing. When a student is potentially ready to return to district, that's when we hold team meetings to make sure that we have the proper supports for their return. And those team meetings also include the out-of-district and parent communication as well.
So I have a five-year timeframe here, so as you can see, my numbers really haven't changed. If anything, we've decreased in our teaching assistants over the years. Next year, we're projecting 33 teaching assistants. Those are general education teaching assistants and special education teaching assistants. We have four teaching aides throughout the district. One chairperson, one, we, our behavioral consultants, we still use BOCs to go through them, our clinicians, we're still going in at six, six full-time people, one part-time social worker at a .4. Our speech therapist is, we have three full-time and one just under .5. And then the area that I'm looking at growing next year by one is at that middle school program for the programs that I was talking to you about, really going out and looking for somebody who is either trained or willing to be trained in applied behavioral analysis, in the teach methodologies, in assistive technology, and using touch chats. A lot of our students that are moving to the middle school come with some unique needs, and really, somebody who is able to work with their parents, their families, work with our school community, working with, really just having that, our students transition through the middle school years and making sure that their, their needs are being met and that they're thriving. So that's the one person. As you can see, though, it's still in 2018, 19, 2019, 2020, we had 26.2 people. That .2 was just a one period a day, but now we're, we're asking for 25.5 people. So we're asking for one additional middle school person who is highly trained. That's the anticipation for next year.
And sorry, for the most part, this is all driven by numbers of students.
Students, it's all driven by mandates of students, yes, by their IEP mandates.
Natalie, is our, the A2-1-2-1, is that our only special class self-contained program?
No.
Okay.
No, so we have 12-1-2-1s, and they're, they also function, most of our 12-1-2-1 classrooms aren't full-day programs, they're, you know, for core subjects. Some students might only have two classes for ELA and Social Studies, and then they'll go out for the rest. They might only be in there for math alone and then go back out to other classrooms. But this program in particular, we really have seen the cohorts grow over the years. So it really is about not just growing a classroom, it's about really building a program K-12 because we see the students that are coming up right through kindergarten even now.
Which also saves us 60,000 to 80,000 of sending them out of district.
Even more, sure.
Or more, that was really good.
Yeah, for sure.
Or more.
And again, I think we have to normalize the conversations around our students with significant disabilities. Our students really see our, see their, their peers every day in school. I think that we need to understand that they do come with unique needs and that they are different, and it's okay. And I just saw Ms. Wayne teaching a bunch of students who joined a club, really, who are going to work with students with some multiple disabilities, and she was really just teaching them about the different disabilities and that it's okay to ask, it's okay to be curious, it's okay to not be sure. And really, that's also with Magma, you know, our program. For those of you who don't know what Magma is, it's a program for multiply-disabled students who don't often get the opportunity, to have the opportunity to play sports or to socialize after-school hours. And Magma, our high school students work with some of our multiply-disabled students and really teaching them social skills, physical skills, rules, just really general sports skills, so, and it's also a place for, for parents to gather. So again, I think normalizing these conversations about the students and their needs is, is a good thing for, for our students and for their families and for our school community, so. Any other questions?
Can you talk to the, can you talk to the high school? I didn't see, mention the high, I didn't see any mention of the high school.
So we, we have an existing program, it's a, is it 12-1-1? 12-1-1 here at the high school for students who are not quite the 8-1-1 population or that need that's driven by the state mandates. It's sort of defined, and it's, it's more significant needs. But yes, we do have a 12-1-1 at the high school, and our students are actually really thriving, they're joining clubs, they are out and about, they are participating in athletics in all different types of ways, so.
And you anticipate the volume of assistance to remain the same at the high school?
Yes. There are no changes at the high school at all, going into next year.
And just one comment, the Magma program, last year, watching the IB videos, the service videos, and how many of those made, how many of the kids made, students made videos for the Magma kids, it was great to see.
It was great to see, and we are looking up, bringing Magma back. We're, we're working on that now, on how to, when, and how, and who, so we're just putting that together for the spring. And I'm looking forward to it, I think it's such a great program.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just quickly, again, the 12-1-2-1 for the academic support, that's not a all-day location. That may be only for the four core subjects or whatever. There's one in each, there's one K4?
So it depends on the grade level and the cohort. So there's 12-1, that's without an assistant, then there's 15-1, then there's 12-1-1. Again, they're sort of scattered, it depends on the cohort and the needs of the students and that grade level, but we... do have the array of services, K-12.
So, we have a 15-1 and a 12-11?
And a 12-1, yes, 12-1, yes, and 811. So, really, we offer, New York State, for those of you that don't understand, New York State offers a continuum of services. So, everything from co-teaching classes, which is your general education classroom with two teachers, one is a special education teacher, one is a general education teacher, and then the continuum of services, of special class services, and that is 12-11, 811, 15-1, 12-1. So, it, we really have an array of services, and it depends on the cohort and the needs of the students at each, for each year.
And theoretically, in one particular grade, you may not need
Correct.
One, and that counts.
Yep. And, and oftentimes, we, we are creative. If, if a student needs something different, we do have some flexibility in terms of consultant teaching services, resource room services, speech services, additional counseling services, things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to thank Natalie and Melissa for their leadership, for their leadership over the department, and definitely the teachers that support our students. I think the word is out that we have a very high-quality special education program and administrators and teachers that care very much about our students. And I think part of the reason for some of these classes is the fact that families are moving into our community to access the outstanding educational opportunities that are provided to their students and meet the needs they have. So, I do want to thank them, everyone involved, administration and teachers, for supporting these students and providing them what they need to be successful. And some of these classes that are pictured here is some of the most amazing teaching I've ever seen in my entire life. So, again, kudos to everyone involved. Thank you.
Oh, it's me.
I introduced myself. All right, so, our next presentation is a review of the draft calendar for next school year. So, this is based upon the draft calendar we get from BOSIs. And we do our best to align ourselves with the BOSIs calendar simply because we share students. And you'll notice that the anticipated start date is the week before Labor Day. There would be two conference days and two student days, very similar to what we did this year. So, Tuesday, Wednesday would be conference days, Thursday, Friday would be the first two student days, and then we would take the Labor Day break and then come back on the sixth. It's a pretty typical calendar compared to previous years. We have a full Christmas break, a full winter break, a spring break. The spring break includes the Monday after Easter. Memorial Day is just the Monday, and then we have to, we have this state holiday, Juneteenth, being celebrated on the 19th of June. The numbers are the same, 186 days, 182 of those are student days, four are conference days, that's where we're allowed for the state, and then the give-back days as well as the possible, if no snow days are used, the additional vacation days that would be added to the calendar are noted on there. So, this calendar has been shared with both the teachers' union and the CSEA union, and those individuals have been provided an opportunity to provide some feedback regarding this draft calendar. Questions?
The Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Is there any leeway there?
So, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is certainly a preference of some. It would come instead of the Monday after Easter. That would be the day we'd have to trade. But the reality is this, if we move that day to the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and then we exceed our number of allotted snow days, our first give-back day would cut into the spring break. So, by leaving the Monday, Easter Monday there, it gives us at least one additional day of flexibility before individuals would lose part of their spring break. Now, I know individuals like to schedule travel plans and do whatever they can do to maintain sort of the sanctity of that spring break. So, if we put that day in the fall, it doesn't help us. If we have it off and then use our snow days, we go right into the spring break. By having it in the spring, it gives us a one-day buffer for one additional give-back day before we cut into the spring break.
And a half-day would count as a full day, or it's on the?
So, as of now, the half-day would count as one of our days. It's just, right now, the issue is the instructional hours. We would have to make sure we're addressing the minimum instructional hours across all three buildings. Once that's done, then the half-day would become a possibility.
But that wouldn't be towards the end of the year? Or we have, like, when would that be looked at?
So, we're in negotiations now. So, if we address the instructional hour piece during negotiations this year, there's a possibility that could be added back as soon as next fall.
Okay, I get it.
Right before next Thanksgiving.
So, that would be my vote.
Maureen, I did look at, you also sent the board the BOSIs calendar. Am I reading it right, that they're coming in on, their kids are coming in Thursday the first, and then they have Friday the second off?
Yeah, some districts have done that, just to elongate the Labor Day weekend.
Okay.
The way it falls with two conference days and people didn't want one student day, so it would be silly to bring students in for just Thursday to have a four-day weekend. So, that was some of the feedback we received from the unions was, if we're going to bring kids back before Labor Day, we'd rather get the two days out of it. We've done creative things regarding the startup of school, regarding staggered schedule, providing time for orientations and things like that. So, the two days provide those buildings that do that, the flexibility to start the year with a staggered start, and then really kick off right after Labor Day with full instruction.
And did I see on the BOSIs calendar, I was surprised about this, Yankaport, they don't have off that day?
I don't know. I'd have to check.
That caught my eye, so it was
They do.
They do have off that day?
They do.
Yeah, they follow a pretty typical schedule. These are conference day at the end of the year, but we're pretty aligned between the two.
Right, the only two differences I saw briefly was there no Easter Monday on BOSIs, and I like that build-in of the Easter Monday, you know, for us, and
Yeah, it's September.
The Thursday.
Black of the year is September.
That first and second, you know, in September. I mean, I, you know, I feel like I want to say it every year, I, I hate start, kids starting before Labor Day, I just hate it. And this is an early Labor Day, but I understand how many pressures there are during the school year, so.
And kids that are in sports are, are already back.
Yeah. It's just a matter of, if we didn't have those two instructional days before Labor Day, then we couldn't have a full winter break, right? One of those days would replace the Monday after Easter, but you still have a second day to make up. The only place to make up that second day would be either during February break or spring break.
We'd just have the long
So.
And in the past, we've done it, we've had a full week break in February, but that also doesn't help if you have issues with snow days. Even though that's not one of the, is that any even on the list here, February? Not even on the list here as give-back days?
They usually aren't.
Yeah, because usually we have enough room, yeah, the spring break to take care of.
What ends up happening when we're opening during winter break is that it snows.
Yep.
And then we end up not only having a day off, but losing a snow day too.
Right. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I have one more question, I'm sorry. And it may be too early to ask this. Are we anticipating staggered start days like we have in the last couple of years?
Yeah, I think the high school would take advantage of that Thursday, Friday. We would do, the Thursday, we'd do our freshman foundations workshops and all that stuff. The middle school started off with 5-6 only, so it was two years because of the pandemic and kids not being in school, but I would assume that we would probably start 5-6 again and run our fifth-grade orientation, our sixth-grade locker opening. Those things typically happened before school opened. And then, last year, on the Friday, the middle school brought back all four of their grades. So, certainly, I would expect some sense of staggered start in the middle school and the high school. Elementary school made the decision to just start with all the students at once.
Thank you. Are we good to adopt it tonight? It's on the agenda for adoption.
You want to table it, or are we good to adopt it later, when it comes up?
I have no problem.
I would say go forward.
And, and I know the earlier Natalie gets the dates, the happier the whole special ed department is, so.
I remember when my kids were in school, I wanted it soon, so.
As soon as it came up, I saw everyone taking their phones out, just making sure. Okay, then you're up for the last presentation.
Okay. We, we wanted to nominate the Area 10 Director, Peggy Zugabe has become the state, uh, the State School Boards Association President. So, we lost our Area 10 Director. There were three nominations. I'm just looking, I, I had them here, and now I've lost them.
Four?
Um, no, there's three.
Cheryl Brady, Debbie Gaddy, and Frank Harrodin.
Right. Oh, there we go. Okay. So, you've gotten their resumes. We nominated Cheryl Brady. At the time, she was the only person running, and they just needed somebody to nominate, but it would be my recommendation that we would vote for Cheryl Brady. I know from talking to people that have worked with her that she really tries to look at almost every situation from multiple viewpoints. She asks really good questions. She approaches things analytically, and reasonably, she changes her mind when new data emerges. And she, so she's, and she serves White Plains, which is a fairly large area and has students of, from multiple perspectives. So, that would be my recommendation, but you guys have to put in what you think also.
Although in, in my review, you know, I think you and I had discussed, I agree that Cheryl seems to be the better choice, also the better, I think, I shouldn't say the better background, but it seems to be that she would be the one of the three. And I think all three could do it just fine.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But of the three, I think Cheryl is probably the strongest with, you know, kind of ticks off more boxes as far as her work that she's done before and the district she works, the board that she's been part of. So, that's just my take is that my, and her video, her, her resume, I just, I got most out of that.
And she's not the longest board-serving. She's actually the shortest of the three. But I definitely, you know, she certainly had the background and the experience. They, I think they would all be good, I don't have
All of them are, and all of them have served
A minimum 12 to 15 years, yeah.
Through West Platte and whatever, you know, in lots of different ways. It's not always easy to, to decide, but what do you guys think? Yes?
Yeah, I'm for Cheryl.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
So, is that, Maureen, will that be under a resolution, or?
Yeah, it's in here.
I typed it in, but just say.
Oh, you just have to say it. Okay, okay. Sounds good. All right, we don't have students today. What happened to our students?
There's a basketball game. That's where two of them are. So
Bounced by a basketball game.
They did send me a quick little note, so I'll read the students' report as they provided it to me. There's a reminder regarding the Winter Blood Drive, which is scheduled for February 8th from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., sponsored by the National Honor Society. It's open to the general public. There's a senior night basketball game tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. It says, be there and be loud. We had an amazing band concert on the 19th. Thank you to all those who made that possible. I'll talk a little bit about that in my presentation as well, or my report. Science Honor Society induction is scheduled for February 1st at 7:00 p.m. And congratulations to all those at PVHS who have broken records and keep us chanting, "Go Tigers."
He didn't quite sound like an 18
I added emphasis myself, sure.
Oh, that was nice.
I know, that's how Dominic would have done it, so I wanted to
If you talk to them, tell them we miss them.
I do.
We told them last time they didn't have to come, and now we can't get them back. So, I think it's our fault. Okay, so I'll jump into my report. So, I was also going to talk a little bit about the high school chorus and band concerts over the last two weeks, both tremendous performances. I know the band concert, we got the breakout, I almost say it wrong, like a zuzu phone or something like that. So, a decoration that was hanging on the wall in the band room for the last 20 or 17 years. We have a dedicated student, Mr. Ben Louder, decided that he was going to take it off the wall and figure out how to play it. So, he stood front and center of the stage and led the band in a performance featuring the zuzu, what is it?
Zuzaphone.
Zuzaphone, which is like a huge tuba thing, that he took off the wall in the band room, and they weren't even sure it worked, but he figured out how to make it to work. So, it was amazing. My favorite performance is they actually did an ensemble featuring the, say, fight songs for each of the armed services. So, they did Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marines and played their songs. So, I thought, I've never seen them all in one song together, and that was pretty impressive to hear. So, again, congratulations to all those involved. Our youngest students, last evening, our elementary school band and chorus performed in the high school. Now, we brought it over to the high school to provide more space for individuals to spread out, but those students were truly impressed by the size and scope of that space. Many of those students have never walked in there, so I know they walked in and were like, whoa. I'm not so sure about this anymore. But they always continue to impress, and again, congratulations to the teachers who really got these students started singing and playing instruments and really developing a love for music. I attended a meeting with Sherrod McConville and other superintendents around the region. We had a great conversation about documentation and formalization of procedures and really making sure that all districts in Putnam County are on the same page and everyone's following the same rule, procedures in terms of lockdowns and other things, and really making himself open and available to our needs and what he can do to support school districts. So, it was greatly appreciated and a great opportunity to meet him. This week, we had an inter-agency lockdown and K-9 training drill, which was very exciting. We had members of the Putnam County Sheriff's Department, the Dutchess County Sheriff's Department, as well as the state troopers. It was a great opportunity to bring multiple agencies together. The reality is, if there was ever an emergency, all of these agencies are likely to respond. Many of the individuals who are here have never been in our building before, so it was a great opportunity for them to come in, get to know the building, get to know some of the individuals, and, and participate in our lockdown drill to understand the procedures that we follow. So, everyone who was here found it greatly beneficial, and then many of them had bought their K-9 dogs and used it as an opportunity to do trainings and sweep of the building, and again, gaining some familiarity of the buildings, how they're laid out. And we offered a little, some cookies and bagels in exchange. But again, thanking them all for taking the time out of their busy days and taking, coming here and getting to know our buildings and our, and our procedures. We had our IB program evening, was supposed to be earlier this week, and unfortunately had to be rescheduled at the last minute, and a new date will be coming out for that in February. I just want to highlight some of the upcoming projects. You'll notice later in the agenda, there's an approval for water treatment. We're installing a new water treatment apparatus at the elementary school, which has well water based upon chemicals that were found during our typical sampling. So, that's something that work will be happening over the summer. We're doing priority roof work at Putnam Valley High School. There's a possibility it may start this summer, more likely the following summer, given the supply chain issues. But this building is now 22 years old, and it occasionally leaks in some places, so we're fixing those. We're adding some outdoor education spaces. I think that we've seen an increase in the usage of these spaces, so particularly at the elementary school and some additions at the high school to create more outdoor learning spaces for our students, hopefully in time for the warmer weather in the spring. We've been updating the modular building behind the elementary school. It was in need of repair. If we did not quickly repair the roof and other things, we could lose it in terms of having a certificate of occupancy. So, Mr. Spittle has been leading the charge and making sure that building is up to speed for whatever we decide to do in it. And this summer, we will be finishing the remaining bathrooms in the middle school, which is sort of the last phase of our facilities project that was approved by the voters several years ago.
Those are the tiny, tiny ones?
What?
The tiny, tiny ones?
What's it, the half, the other half of the building, including the tiny, tiny ones and then the larger bathrooms. So, as everyone's aware, there has been much of a mask debate. It was an interesting evening, night, and morning this week, just trying to figure out what's going on. So, I think by now, everyone's aware, aware that a stay has been issued, we're awaiting a court decision, and that the mandate currently remains in place. That could come, the decision, my understanding is, could come as early as tomorrow. I think there was a little confusion created. There was a newspaper article written today regarding an individual school district saying that once the mandate expires, that masks will become optional. I just wanted to clarify, that's what we've I just wanted to clarify, that's what we've been saying for over a month. So, we, although we didn't get a newspaper article, that's our plan as well. Um, we certainly will not maintain a mandate that is no longer a mandate. So in the event that the courts rule that the mandate is gone, we will also transition to making masks optional here in Putnam Valley, as has been communicated on many occasions. As everyone's aware, the district has stopped conducting contact tracing. We do continue to notify contacts. Uh, we continue to monitor for clusters, to make sure that there's no incidence of the virus spreading within our classrooms. We're continuing to emphasize the importance of testing and keeping home any sick students. And we're making home tests available to any student who would like them. For any parent who's interested in receiving home tests from the school district, obviously free of charge, you can fill out the surveillance testing form for students. Uh, we're going to send another reminder out, I think, tomorrow. And, um, quick little survey, couple of questions. We'll deliver the tests right to your students' classroom in their back, well, at the youngest grade levels, directly into their backpack, and, uh, they'll be able to take those tests home before their use. Okay, so our January newsletter just went out, and I wanted to highlight some of the things in there. So in my message, I really talked about this idea of thriving, especially compared to other school districts. I think Putnam Valley has thrived throughout the pandemic, all things considered. And one of the interesting facts that I included in there is I really think families have taken notice. Each year, we typically net zero families when we take those families that are newly registering students and families that are leaving the district. That's typically a wash in a, in a normal school year. But we know over the last couple of years, that's not been the case. So we actually pulled each of the numbers for each year, and over the last two and a half years, Putnam Valley has welcomed a hundred and sixty-six new students to our schools. So that's a hundred and sixty-six more students than students who left. In total, we have about three hundred and seventy-five new students who came into our schools. But when we take away those who moved out, our net is a hundred and sixty-six students in two and a half years. We've never seen that type of increase of school-aged children. Now, this isn't kindergartners coming in, these are students enrolling in our schools at any grade level. Um, and I think it's really just a testament to the work that we've been able to do over the last couple of years. My message to talk, I'm very much looking forward, uh, to, to moving beyond the pandemic and continuing to build on the momentum we have. We also feature our budget process, of which, uh, those who were here this evening saw. Our informational meetings, our, our district treasurer will be offering informational budget meetings. Transparency and communication are really the theme, so if you have any questions, anything you want to know more about, uh, we're going to do small group settings and an opportunity for anyone to ask any questions about the budgeting process or the budget itself, um, directly with our business official. And my real goal this year is to increase our voter turnout. In review of the rolls from last year, nine percent of registered voters in Putnam Valley came out and voted for the school, um, budget. So if put another way, ninety-one percent of registered voters did not come out and vote for the school budget last year. So I certainly hope through our information meetings, our transparency in our communications, that we can see a greater percentage of the community exercise their democratic right to vote. The newsletter also highlights our E and L program, specifically Jonathan Hogan in the elementary school, who's been an amazing teacher, um, working with students and families and teachers. Our Putnam Valley Middle School science program is piloting a new science program in partnership with Bosse's aligned to the new science standards. Uh, we spoke a little bit about the high school band concert, which is amazing, and the innovation lab class at the elementary school, which has replaced the traditional technology class. Students are pretty well mastered the technology piece. So now we're finding ways to incorporate design thinking, creativity, and problem solving for our youngest students, um, in a fun and, um, uh, project-driven environment. The college application process workshop is still going on. I was looking to see if any of them were here. So that's going on in the auditorium. I do want to congratulate, uh, junior Eva DeChant, scored her thousandth point, a huge accomplishment as a junior. So it'll be interesting to see where she ends at the end of her senior year. And our newsletter also spylight, spotlights Helen Horvitz, uh, our board trustee. Thirty-six years of educational experience as a teacher and administrator, so she's got a little section in there. As well as Joe Torres, who's a bus driver, a Good Samaritan, who organized a donation drive for the victims of the tragic apartment fire in the Bronx. He was able to drive all the donations down in a bus, uh, that was provided to him through Orange County Transit. And it's really a great story. And I am going to recommend that the board honor Joe with pride in Putnam Valley next meeting.
Absolutely.
So just some housekeeping, we have used three snow days so far, and we have three snow days remaining. Uh, I did want to take an opportunity to open up a discussion regarding remote access, um, with the board and ultimately come up with a decision for what we're going to do with that remote access. I just wanted to share the current numbers. We currently have eleven high school students, six middle school students, and five elementary school students participating in that remote access. So we had promised families we would provide an update at the next board meeting, which was a week later than anticipated. But now's our opportunity to discuss how we want to handle remote access moving forward. Thoughts?
Well, first of all, I was glad to see that there were fewer numbers than I anticipated, seeing? So that, that was good. These students, um, we would still offer remote access to students who were quarantined. We would just take some of the extra students that we, we opened it up to, is that?
Correct. So we would still, we sort of separated the two. Quarantine instruction is what we would call it for those individuals under state mandated quarantine, which is everyone's aware, is now a shorter period of time than it previously was, whether you're isolation because you tested positive or quarantine because you were exposed. So there's a shorter period of time in which that would continue to be provided. But remember, the district's no longer placing identifying kids to be placed in quarantine, so that number of quarantine students has drastically, um, declined over the last couple of weeks. Uh, but it would still be available, quarantine instruction would be available for that. The piece that would be going away is we expanded the criteria for individuals in the midst of sort of the Omicron surge to provide families for a myriad of reasons, to allow their students to participate remotely. Um, and those are the numbers that I shared. Everyone agrees that students learn best in school. Our teachers are more impactful when students are in school. Uh, their attention is divided when they have home students and students in person. So I, I'm comfortable with at least setting an end date to when that will be available for our students, provide families to plan accordingly. And then really, I think it's a statement that we're moving, we're going to continue to move towards normalcy. So I think that time has come for that, that transition to continue, and hopefully, other things continue to move in that direction and, and the sense of normalcy will feel real.
I, I would agree. I think these are low numbers, and that makes me very happy. And I, we do, we all have, have taken the stand that kids learn best when they're in school. Giving people time, you know, we don't want to say tonight, okay, as of Monday. You know, that's it, like, coming up with a, a timeframe that is reasonable, and hopefully maybe cover some of the winter concerns and before you know it, even though there's an eight-inch snowstorm coming, the nicer weather is right around the corner. I hope.
Helen, did you have a question?
Yeah. Is there a specific number that you're looking for before you allow students to be taught remotely?
In terms of if we went back, if more students started to go to remote?
I mean, is there a number of students that you look for before, you know, a, a threshold or a percentage of students before you go, they go virtual?
No, I mean, I don't think we've used metrics to determine it like that. It was just based upon the positivity rate, the number of cases we saw. I was getting a lot of emails from parents that are very concerned about their children with underlying health conditions or family members with underlying health conditions. So, I, my fear was, what I didn't want, is I didn't want families sending symptomatic kids to school because their only other choice was to miss an entire day of school or multiple days of school. So by providing remote access to more students, we were giving parents sort of an opportunity for them to keep their symptomatic children home, but still allowing them to participate in education. So that, to me, was really the driving force. Let's make it easier for them to learn from home. Parents are more likely to keep symptomatic students home, maybe get them tested, await the test results, and then there's less of a chance that we're sending potentially positive students into classrooms where they can infect others. So I think it's, it's been successful. I think it's served its purpose. But I think considering the data we know from across the state and across the region, that those concerns are at least becoming alleviated. And I'm, I'm anxious to get students back in the classrooms where I know our teachers can be most impactful.
I'm curious, what were the volumes last week, if we had a lot, a meeting last week? Do you know?
They were surprisingly low. Uh, they really, they never got as high as I feared they would. I, I was worried, or I remember, last time we did this, we had hundreds of high school kids participating in remote learning. I want to say the numbers were sixteen, eleven, and nine, um, maybe last week, and, and certainly improved from this week.
I personally agree with Janine. It's, you know, it's probably time to bring him back as much as possible. And I'd give a little away, like, the fourth, maybe, like, another week, and then, because like you said, you don't want to, unless you do.
Tell them tomorrow, yeah.
In fairness to them, I would give them time to plan accordingly.
And I wonder, sorry, and I wonder how, how, um, the February break plays into this? If you, if that even does play into it, uh, as far as running up until that time or having the week before that time? I'm not suggesting a particular day, just knowing that it's the last week of February. It's a long ways away. It's, it's three weeks away. Because here, we're, we're, uh, we're the twenty-seventh, and it starts the twenty-first, so it's a full
Yeah, three, four weeks away.
Three and a half weeks away, and that seems kind of a long time.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's just my gut. It seems a month away, another month away from being in person is another month away from being in person.
Yeah. So why don't I suggest we make next Friday, February fourth, the end of the current, uh, remote access piece? So they give the families a little over a week to plan. They would come back to school the following Monday. And it's not set in concrete, right? If February break comes it through, or the variant of the variant's variant starts spreading around, um, and we go back to a positivity rate of thirty percent, right? There's nothing that prohibits us from going back and opening it up again. But for as long as the numbers continue to decline and we continue to see limited cases in our schools, I feel comfortable having those students back in school. Students with real severe medical conditions have other recourse, right? They can go on home bound instruction, we can provide tutoring. Um, there, there are certainly opportunities for students who are severely medically fragile to continue to learn.
And, and now it's a lot easier to get a rapid test than it was three weeks ago.
I got boxes full of them, so, so just let me know. I should have bought them for everyone here in the crowd this evening.
As long as families are back.
New Year's gift coming to the door.
Yeah, if you, if you give me a minute at the end of the meeting, I'll get a box, and I'll hand them to you on your way out. It'd be like a parting gift.
You get a test, you get a test, you get a test.
So does everyone go with that plan?
It sounds like a plan, yeah.
And we, if the, if the need dictates that we could always go back?
Okay.
Okay? Sounds like a plan.
Um, I have a question. For those outside, that are not in the school district, how do they get these, this newsletter? How can they sign up for it?
That is a great question, the newsletter? So, uh, if they go to our website, I can see her coming over already. Very gingerly. Did you pull a muscle? So it is available on our website, and Mr. Mike is going to come over and explain to you exactly how to sign up. I hope everyone in the community signs up to receive, uh, the newsletter. It's a tremendous amount of work from Mr. Levine, uh, to put it together. Uh, but it's really a great way to get a little glimpse of what's going on in our schools. Important information, upcoming events, all that good kind of stuff.
Yes, you're, you're a hundred percent right. Right on the front page of the website, it says, sign up for newsletter. It just asks for an email address, and it is also a way for us to collect some alumni information. So if, if, uh, you're, you were a student of Putnam Valley, we want you to share your graduation year. We just add you to that electronic email list and we'll send it out.
PVCSD.org.
PVCSD.org. Putnam Valley Central School District dot org.
Thank you very much. All right, a couple last things. One PSA for the elementary school PTA. Uh, elementary school yearbooks are on sale. Uh, and other yearbook information is available on their website. And then kudos to some of our high school students. We had ten students participating in the Katona Museum of Art for Young Artists exhibition that begins on February sixth, and it runs for a couple of weeks. Uh, so if you have an opportunity to go check out the Katona Museum of Art, uh, you'll be able to see the work of some of our own PVHS students. And again, we had ten students participating in the Junior Science and Humanities, Humanity Symposium. Uh, this is the third year in a row that Putnam Valley has had more students entered than any other school, um, in northern New York. So congratulations, uh, to Mr. Zupan and all of his science research students. It's a tremendous accomplishment. And if you ever watch any of them present their presentations, I promise they know way more words than you do. I have to look them up every time. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Jeremy, you got them?
No.
Okay, new business. Going to start with number one, please?
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of school monitor Jennifer Tattaliamonte Akram from the district effective January twelfth, twenty twenty-two, as per document number one eighteen twenty-two attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second?
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Christina Longitano to a five-month leave replacement position as a teacher at the high school effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two through June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two anticipated or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education on step one M A. of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Longitano holds students with disabilities generalist, seven to twelve, emergency COVID certification.
Second? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Rebecca Cassidy at the elementary school as a part-time teaching assistant, long-term substitute, one point five hours daily, effective January eighteenth of twenty twenty-two through June twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two or sooner at the discretion of the board at the substitute salary of twenty, twenty dollars and seventy-two cents per hour, step one hourly rate.
Second?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three district calendar as per document number one nineteen slash twenty-two attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second?
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved that the Board of Education casts their vote for Cheryl Brady as a New York State School Boards Association Area Ten Director and authorizes the district clerk to execute any documents consistent with this motion.
Second?
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby approves the installation of a water treatment system at the Putnam Valley Elementary School with the cost of the project not expected to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. The funding source of this project has been approved as part of the C R R S A federal stimulus package.
Second? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. We are now going to open this meeting up for public comment on any topic, remembering that hateful, hurtful, judgmental, inaccurate, or otherwise inappropriate comments will not be allowed.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Do you want my, my name and address?
Yes, please.
My name is Patty Villanova, and I live in Putnam Valley. My first comment is really a question. On Tuesday evening, I did a Zoom. On Tuesday evening, I did a Zoom presentation about how to run for school board. It's part of a statewide group that I belong to, and I noticed that Mr. Ferraro was there, our own board member, but he was kind of incognito. I was wondering if he was sent there, why he was there, if he was representing the board, because if you need me to do a presentation on how to run for the board, I'll be glad to do it. I know a lot of people are interested, but I figured maybe he wanted, maybe he wanted to get some tips. So that was not, he was not sent there by the, okay. Well, all right, interesting. I hope you enjoyed the presentation.
It was fun, thank you.
And the other comments I had to make, I'm glad that you guys are at least considering putting some kind of end to these masks. And, you know, I've come here a few times in the last year, I've given you all kinds of, it goes without saying now, these masks don't do anything, it's really just kind of Kabuki theater. But, you know, one of the things that really bothered me was, I was listening to these teachers, whoever was doing the presentation, about the kids that have learning disabilities and other problems, and these are kids that are nonverbal, and they get very frustrated. And they were describing this, and I cannot believe that these poor children were subjected to having to learn with masks. These are kids that had problems. I know, I'm partially deaf, and these masks have made my life hell, because we instinctively read lips, and that's how, and we look at people's faces. And what has been done to these children, it has been abusive, okay, all of this. And I hope and pray that tomorrow there is a decision, that that stay is lifted. However, one of the things that nobody contested was the fact that we are no longer in New York in an emergency situation, okay? That was part of the lawsuit that was brought by the parents, that was in the court papers, in the original order. So we are not under an emergency situation, and any of these suggestions from the Health Department, even now, even if whatever happens, these are not laws. These are some kind of, you know, they're almost on the level of suggestions. They're not even enforceable, and there are cases that are going through the system now that will be, eventually these masks are going to be knocked out. But this district should have had the courage to stop it, to stand up, to take a stand against doing this, against masking these kids. I mean, these children, we have suicides, we have drug use, we have all kinds of problems that have been exacerbated because of the lockdowns, because of the masks. And these kids have given up so much in the last two years. It's like the kids have had to, everything is reversed. Instead of the older people and the parents sacrificing for the children, it's been the children sacrificing for the parents, and that is wrong. It has to stop regardless of what happens in the court tomorrow, which I am hoping and praying that that stay is lifted. But look at how ridiculous it is. I know, I'm in a number of groups, people that are civil liberties groups and that are concerned about all for the last two years of our loss of freedom, our loss of our civil rights. And what happened? So one day you get an order, okay, you don't have to wear the masks, so they don't wear the mask. Oh, we got to stay, now they got to put them back on. Is this really about health or is this about politics? And it's just, it's become like some kind of a religious symbol. So I hope this district, I hope that you will do the right thing when it comes to this, and eventually with the vax mandates, which are coming down there. One other thing along those lines that I would like to mention, you know, board members, for the most part, have protection from liability, from things that they do. They have, you know, you probably have your insurance and your bonds and everything, but there's one thing that you actually, board members can be sued for individually, and that is if you violate people's civil rights. And there are a number of cases that are working their way through the courts involving just those issues. So I just want you to know that when it comes to violating people's civil rights, as has been going on here, you are not invulnerable to that as board members. You will be personally liable when these suits come to fruition if need be.
Good evening, everybody. Krista Straub. I am the Moms for Liberty Putnam County Chair. I've come here tonight, Dr. Love, to thank you for all your communications and for putting up with me, you know, every day. I think you're a very patient man, and you're really trying to do what's right for all of us. I do. I also want to thank you for your avocation, for the letter that you sent, for asking for more local control. I'm very supportive of you with that, and if anything I can do to help, I will do that. You just reach out to me.
Can you chair it?
Don't fall off your chairs, I'm going to be nice tonight. I, I've been around a little bit, around the county, doing this advocate work, and this week has been like such a trying week. I've seen videos of babies crying, I've seen kids being pushed into rooms because they're, you know, they don't want to wear their mask. I've seen kids being denied an education, but none of it was here. And I want to, I want to thank you for your staff's compassion with this issue, that maybe they don't have to, you know, constantly tell them to put it up and do those types of things to the kids and make it divisive in that way, and speak to the parents. I haven't heard any bad things. This was all elsewhere, so I want to thank you. Also, our meetings are very open. We, I've seen other districts go remote, and they shut microphones off and stuff, and I want to thank you for respecting our First Amendment rights to come here and speak to you so that you can help us and hear us and tell you how we feel. So I am going to bring up the vaccine mandate, and I'm not going to overdo it with everything I've already sent you or we've spoke about in email, but I'm opposed to it, the mandate, but I'm also opposed to some of the marketing that's been doing, that's been going on with our kids. Like, I hear teachers say, oh, it's an act of love, you know, if your parents should go get you vaccinated, it's an act of love. And acts of love are given. They're never forced, because a forced act of love is rape. So I'm here tonight to beg you to not let the government rape our children with this mandate. This vaccine, these five-to-eleven parents, a lot of them don't want it. They're not ready for this. They don't, there's not enough studies for them. It's just they're, the kids are young and they're worried, and they're not seeing an immunity. It's not, it's not protecting people from getting it. And my, both my kids have had COVID. I wouldn't want to get them vaccinated, you know, and it being forced on them is not an act of love, you know? So I just wanted to say that, and thank you for being here and listening to me and dealing with me, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Figarella, business official for the school district. I'm more or less here just to remind everyone that we are going to have some sessions for budget Q and A. We're going to have a series of four one-hour workshops, and they're going to be held. The first one is going to be Wednesday, February sixteenth. We recommend signing up for it so that if you have any specific questions, you can submit them. There's a place to submit the questions so we can address them properly when you come, but the questions will really be directed at the meeting by whoever comes. It's not going to be, I'm not going there to make a presentation, I'm going there to help people understand the budget process and answer questions that they have. So February sixteenth is our first one. I don't want to bog you down with all the dates, but if you go to our website and you take a look at the newsletter that's there, it gives the other dates as well, March third, March ninth, and March twenty-second, and they're all being held at different times of the day so that we can help to accommodate, you know, different groups of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
I do want to just quickly follow up on something that Krista had brought up. I very much appreciate the students that we have here in our schools, and I know that many students came in the other day confused or unaware or upset about what had transpired, but our students are amazing, and whether they, regardless of how they felt personally, they came in, and every single person in the high school, in the middle school, elementary school, came in with a mask, wearing a mask, regardless of their own personal feelings, they were respectful of the adults and everything that was going on. So I just want to say that I very much appreciate, regardless of personal feelings, that our students always step up and do the right thing, and that's very much appreciated. Along those same lines, I know there's individuals that are here this evening who feel very strongly about the mask mandate and would much prefer to not be sitting here wearing a mask, but yet, as I look up, each of them sits there wearing a mask despite the fact that many do not, and I just want to say, thank you, I appreciate your compliance. I very much would love to avoid the taking recesses from meetings and talking to people. It's just ultimately not productive for anyone's time or the work that we're trying to do here. So I very much appreciate your willingness to participate for as long as it shall be, right? Maybe it'll be over tomorrow, but it's appreciated. So I do want to say those two things, so thank you.
Okay, board member comments? I just want to piggyback right on what Jeremy said. I work in another school district, obviously, and there was a lot of chatter among middle school students on Tuesday. Are we supposed to wear masks? Are we not supposed to wear masks? And it was interesting to me, the debates among the middle schoolers that I came into contact. Many of my very anxious kids like the masks. They feel control, they feel like they're doing something against a scary disease, and other kids disagreed with them. As always, I'm always amazed at how well children disagree, how well they speak to each other, even with the different viewpoints. And I just think, remember, one particular student said, well, if I continue to wear a mask, even when we're not supposed to, is anybody going to make fun of me? And most of, I mean, every other student said, of course not, you know, it's a personal choice, do what you want. And I continuously see kids on mask breaks not taking their mask off. So there's a lot of points of view about masks, and it's about tolerance and choice once the mandate's lifted, so I just thought that was interesting. I was amazed watching the elementary concert, and I thought of Dr. Love's word thrive, and I thought, so I've seen middle school, it's out of order, so I, middle school, high school, elementary school, but the growth from elementary, middle, and high school is so clear as students progress and become more, learn more, grow, whatever, but all of them performed with masks, you could hear the words, you know, they sang, the elementary students sang in Spanish, you know, you could, you could hear what they were saying, and they played their instruments beautifully, you know? I'm always amazed, Ms. Bennett, who teaches the, our beginning instrumentalists, I thought, oh my gosh, what that must be like at the beginning, you know, trumpet player or drum player, but they were really amazing. I will say that they really were, and they all were wearing masks, so you could still hear them sing.
Not topic of masks, but I don't know if you mentioned, Jeremy, the Science Honor Society is Tuesday night?
February first, I believe is the date.
Yeah, Tuesday night, right?
Yeah.
I like that one.
I like to go in so I can feel not intelligent. I can be amazed.
I just love the passion, you know, the passion of those students that have just put such energy into it and are so proud of their accomplishments, as they should be.
And they actually have good speakers usually. I remember the year, I want to say the Albano boy, but he's not a boy, he's a man.
Yeah, Nick Albano presented a few years ago.
Presented, they're just, really, it is amazing. Yeah.
The Albano boy has boys.
I know.
Has a boy.
I know, but he's always seven to me, you know, like he doesn't ever grow older. I'm horrified every time I hear the voting statistics. Nine percent of our registered voters, who aren't, and that's not even all the people who could be voters, and the reverse, the thinking of ninety-one percent of our voters not voting, although they did all vote during the, or many more voted when they could vote by mail. So, yeah, I hope we can convince them to come out and vote. I was on an advocacy, Westchester Putnam School Boards Association advocacy meeting the night of the, that the Long Island decision came down, so like in the middle of our meeting there, our advocates are like, wait, things are changing, wait, let me read the whole thing, let, you know, what are we going to do? How are people going to approach it? We do advocate for schools and students and on many issues, this being one. So I know sometimes people don't see that we're advocating for our kids, but we are. We just don't necessarily do it in a, you know, in a form that everybody's aware of, but it does help to talk to other people in other districts and to find out how they're handling it, so, and that we can speak with a stronger voice. Okay, anything else?
I do want to just say that our next board meeting, or the two presentations that are scheduled are a presentation of curriculum instruction presented by Ms. Levine and our high school budget presentation by Dr. Seppi and Mr. Mello will be our next board meeting budget presentations.
Anything else? Okay, then I'd like a resolution to convene an executive session for one matter of the employment history of one particular person.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, stay warm.